All right, we're good to go, I think. All right. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. This is the second public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission of the Village of Thomaston relating to request that we designate 124 South Middle Neck Road as a landmark under the village code. And I, you know, due to, due to public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19 and pursuant to New York State law, I'm required to notify you that this meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission is not being held in person, that's obvious. Meeting is being recorded and a transcription will be provided at a later date. And the recording and transcription will be placed on the village website and in the village records. So with that formality out of the way, at our first meeting a month ago, the commission selected a consultant after public comment. That consultant, Archaeology and Historic Resource Services, was retained, has rendered its report, which is on the village website. They will also make a brief presentation tonight. So our agenda tonight is to hear public comment on whether or not the commission should designate 124 South Middle Neck Road as a landmark under Chapter 120 of the village code. And we're going to proceed tonight as follows. First, I'll ask the commission consultant to give a brief presentation of their report, limited to five to 10 minutes in length. Second, and a lot of this has come in today, so we're trying to keep on topic, but a number of residents have engaged consultants or others who have made, who would like to make a presentation. They've submitted materials that are on the website, and we're going to give them the same opportunity as we are giving the commission's consultant. We'll let, the ones that I'm aware of at least, that sent me notice in advance, we'll ask them, invite them to speak for five to 10 minutes each. We certainly welcome their expertise and their input. And again, their presentations are all on the website already. Then I'm going to ask if anyone is present from the owner as a representative or an attorney who would like to make a presentation on behalf of the owner. And finally, I'm going to open the floor up to individual comments. We're going to limit the time for each individual comment to two minutes, which I think should be enough time to make any points the speaker wants to make. And also, we want to give everyone a chance to speak at a reasonable hour so that no one drops out of the meeting before they are heard. Each person who would like to speak will be recognized once tonight during the final portion of the meeting. And to avoid any appearance of favoritism or unfairness, we're going to strictly enforce the two-minute rule as to everybody, so everybody's subject to the same rule. Keep in mind that if you feel you've run out of time or have other things to say, you can always submit written comments. We read everything. There's a lot on the website. I should say that we've received many, many emails and some other correspondence. It's all charted. There's a chart on the website which lists everything we've received, so you can look at that and then decide if other, if you want to read further. But I've read everything that's on the website, and I'm sure other commission members have done the same. As I said in the first meeting we had, we're committed to making a reasonable decision through a fair process. We welcome everyone's input, which will inform our decision. So I think we'll start things off. Let's, let's admit, Maria and I think Jason, there are two people from AHRS that are present. I think we should admit them both as panelists, Tom.
Okay.
And I asked them, I asked Maria and Jason to limit themselves to five to 10 minutes maximum.
All right, let me just locate them and bring them in.
You need Jason's last name?
Jason, perhaps Maria could tell us Jason's last name.
Maria, are you on?
I am. Jason Flatt.
Flatt? With an F?
Yes. F-L-A-T-T.
Okay. Hello, Maria.
How are you?
Hi.
I'm not seeing him on the list of people who've signed in.
Let me see if I could get ahold of him.
Okay.
Because I know he is in there.
He said he's going to.
Wait, hold on. Wait, I just found it.
He says he's here.
Oh, I see. It's William Jason Flatt. Okay, hold on a second.
Yeah, it says that he's here.
Okay, I got it. I got it, Mr. Lemon.
Okay, the floor is yours, Maria and Jason.
Okay. Jason will be presenting the PowerPoint presentation. Is there a way that we could bring that up? Make him co-host or something?
He should be able to, it's a screen share.
Okay, great.
I can do that. I just joined as panelist, so screen is flashing around a bit.
Here we go. Okay. Well, hello, everybody. Happy New Year. My name is Maria Auden and president of Archaeology and Historic Resource Services. I am here with my colleague Jason Flatt to give a brief presentation about our findings. We were hired by the Village of Thomaston to conduct a historic architectural review, landmark evaluation, to determine whether or not the building located at 124 South Middle Neck Road, otherwise known as Belgrade Motors, would be considered a landmark according to the code of the Village of Thomaston's definition of landmark. Please note, there does not appear to be any requirement that the village landmarks preservation commission or the Board of Trustees formally designate any building that satisfies this definition of landmark. Accordingly, the act of formally designating a property as a landmark that is afforded protection under the code of the Village of Thomaston is distinct from the initial determination of whether a building satisfies, excuse me, satisfies the definition of landmark in the code. An undesigned landmark is afforded no protection under the code of the Village of Thomaston. So in order to establish whether or not Belgrade Motors would be considered a landmark, research was conducted at the Village of Thomaston's clerk's office, Great Neck Library, New York Cultural Resource Information System, Library of Congress, Sanborn Maps, and other sources to make this evaluation, as well as reviewing the federal, state, and local preservation laws.
So all of that research did reveal quite a bit of interesting history on the building. And this research was necessary in part to establish whether or not the building, as it appears today, is the building that was built back in 1931. So here's a collection of photographs. At the top left, you see an image of the 1937 Sanborn map. And our 124 South Middle Neck Road is on the right, says very clearly, built 1931. Good to know. At the bottom left, we have some preliminary design plans that are held by the Village of Thomaston. These plans have a handwritten date of 1930 on them. They don't tell us who the architect's name was, but what we see here are some building plans that are very similar to the building that was constructed, but clearly not what was constructed. At the top right, there's an artistic rendering of the building that appeared in a 1936 publication. And there you can see that the building is very much as it appears today with a little bit of artistic license taken on the, on the one facade. They shortened it for the image. And at the bottom right, a postcard from the early 1950s showing the building very much as it looks today and presumably very much as it looked when built in 1931. Building is a very high-quality Tudor Revival style design, fairly remarkable in, in architecture. So, little bit of background information. The National Register of Historic Places, that's going to come up in discussion a bit, this was created in 1966. And National Register listing is an honor that signifies that a property is an important part of America's cultural heritage and worthy of preservation. Eligibility for the National Register depends on being at least 50 years old. Then there are seven aspects of integrity, and then at least one of the four-lettered criterion. Just very briefly, letter A is for events in history, B has to do with a person, C is loosely speaking, architecture, and D, again loosely speaking, is archaeological We have this letter from the New York State Historic Preservation Office that explicitly states that the former Belgrade Motors building is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, specifically under criterion C for architecture. It's an excellent example of that Tudor Revival style, and it maintains a high degree of integrity, also necessary, and of course, it's older than 50 years old. This is the code of the Village of Thomaston's definition of landmark. I'm not here to read it to you. I will say that most municipal preservation ordinances are modeled on the National Register of Historic Places language. And that's what we see here in the Village of Thomaston. The goal for most municipalities is typically to protect and preserve properties that are either listed on the National Register or eligible for listing on the National Register. And to take just a quick moment, National Register designation or listing doesn't really do anything to impact private property rights, and it only affords a very nominal level of protection for a property. That nominal level of protection is from federal or state projects that would have an adverse effect on this. Think of, say, a road widening project or a highway coming through. It's at the local level through local designation that property rights begin to be impacted. And that's why these local ordinances, they reflect the National Register, but then they put the teeth in it to actually protect and, and ensure that a building continues to be in a community. Little bit of an observation here, this is, again, very typical in municipal definitions of landmark. We have a lot of or statements, not a lot of and statements. The only and requirement here is that the building be in the village. So in order to be considered a landmark, we don't have to satisfy every aspect of this definition. We have to satisfy some of them and be in the village. To go through the definition a little bit and compare that with the National Register language, the, the first part of your definition of landmark compares relatively well with the National Register language in that it says, we're talking about buildings, districts, sites, structures, and objects. And where the definition in the code of the Village of Thomaston says, reflected or exemplified, that may be considered a nod to integrity, where we're talking about integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. We get a little more, little more correlation with National Register here. This portion of the definition correlates very well with the National Register criterion A, events, and criterion B, persons. In the case of the former Belgrade Motors building, this is where we really focus. National Register criterion C talks about architecture. This portion of the definition speaks specifically to architecture, so the two, again, here correlate very well. This last part of the definition is interesting. Should discuss a little bit. It says that the landmark also includes any site that is on a list maintained by the state of New York, be it the National Register of Historic Places or Historic American Building Survey, or any similar list. Well, as I mentioned earlier, this building has been identified by the state of New York's Historic Preservation Office as being eligible for listing on the National Register. That eligible for listing, from the state Historic Preservation Office perspective and from the Department of the Interior's perspective, carries the same weight as though the building were already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's the same list, the Cultural Resource Information System in New York. So it's eligible for listing, and as such, it has that nominal protection from state and federal actions that might have an adverse effect on the property. Again, think of, say, a freeway coming through that particular lot. So we have some brief conclusions here that the former Belgrade Motors building does satisfy the code of Village of Thomaston's definition of landmark. Based on our research, we can say that it does maintain a very high degree of integrity. It is National Register eligible, as, as testified by the State Historic Preservation Office. And we were also asked to do a little comparison of this building to, to a similar property, the Lincoln Building in Roslyn. And as you may have noted in the report, the building in the Village of Thomaston compares very favorably to that in Roslyn. It's, it's a better building. Anyway, that, that concludes our, our assessment of the building.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And now I think, I, I understand that Ann Walker has been retained by several residents of Thomaston. I'm going to give her five to 10 minutes now. Ann, but would you start by saying who retained you, so we know who that is? And then please limit yourself to five to 10 minutes max. Thank you.
Just, just one moment. We have to bring her in as a, as a panelist.
Okay.
Ann Walker.
And I guess the other two can leave as panelists.
Hold on one second. Let me just make sure I get Ms. Walker.
Okay, I found it. I'm bringing her in.
Okay.
You know, there are a lot of people that are texting. I guess I'm old school. I find it quite distracting. I would like to focus on the people who are talking and paying attention. Hello, Ann, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So if you could just stop by letting us know who retained you, so we understand what auspices you're speaking tonight.
Okay, so I was retained by some citizens of Thomaston and Greater, Greater, Great Neck. Specifically, I've been speaking with Nancy Sherman and Wendy Pyle. Or Field.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, first I wanted to start out and say good evening. I am Ann Walker, an architectural historian, preservationist, as well as the author of a series of books with Peter Pennoyer on early 20th century architecture. So as my presentation will show, and I'm going to try and make it relatively brief, it should be designated a local landmark due to its artistic value and distinctive architectural characteristics, some of the language that was just used that reflect both its context and the period in which it was built. 124 South Middle Neck Road was built in 1931 by Mordov Holdings, a company owned by two Great Neck residents, Louis W. Wolf and Morris, Morris Lefkowitz. They also owned the Belgrade Apartments directly behind, which had been built several years earlier. In 1930, when Mordov Holdings requested a zoning change to include this business property in the residential section of Belgrade Square, they came to an agreement with concerned neighbors and parties that quote, "No building, one story in height, commonly known as a taxpayer, should be erected on any part of the said premises." This is an agreement from the Nassau County Land Records. What Lefkowitz and Morris built was in fact the opposite of a taxpayer, which are relatively nondescript one-story buildings. You see them a lot in New York City as well. Rather, it's a Tudor Revival showplace with distinct architectural characteristics and two highly visible facades. This, their choice of the Tudor Revival style shows that the owner had pride in their, in the area in which they lived. They were sympathetic to the predominant style of Belgrade Square and Great Neck Plaza, and they wanted to uphold their local architectural tradition. Tudor Revival style is based loosely on late medieval prototypes from England's Tudor period from the 16th century. And this became especially popular in the 1920s in more wealthier areas and suburbs that were cropping up. Like most Revivalist styles, then popular, it lent a level of prestige and permanence to newly constructed neighborhoods. So like the surrounding homes, the Tudor Revival style gave Belgrade Motors a layer of respectability and tradition, integrating this building into its context. And you can see in this ad, you saw this picture previously, it's really the building, not the, the business inside or the cars, that conveys this quote, prestige of permanence. It's the building. The architects used a more rustic version of the Tudor in the design of this two-story common bond brick-stone stucco building. The almost symmetrical nine-bay facade incorporates classic Tudor elements such as stone windows surrounds randomly placed stone, long cross gables, sheathed with a regular slate. The facade is anchored by a beam.
Can I stop you for a minute? Somebody's asked. You should feel free, if you have photographs and you'd like to share the screen, we're happy to do that with you. Just wanted to let you know that.
Oh, do you not see my screen?
No.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Do I have to accept? Oh, sorry. I feel horrible. I thought I was sharing my screen the whole time. Hold on.
Yeah. We also have seen the pictures on the website, so we're familiar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. I do have specific pictures where to go. Oops, sorry. Let me just pull it up. I had it up before.
Take your time.
So this is just the prestige of permanence, that's what I was saying before. And then this is, okay, so, and then you see the stone window surrounds randomly placed stone bricks, the nine-bay facade. The center, the main vehicular entrance delineated by pointed or Gothic arch, a stone parapet and gateway reminiscent of a portcullis in a Tudor castle. Picturesque stone towers anchor the corner of the buildings, each detailed differently with either pyramidal or crenulations. And irregular stone detailing and projecting brick headers highlight the shop windows. A stone buttress calls out the most prominent and visible corner of the building and wraps the architectural language into the southeast facade, a more picturesque and rambling amalgam of Tudor elements. This, this creates this accumulative quality, which is supported or enhanced by these stucco sections that are mixed in with the stone and brick, as well as the parapets and the different types of roof lines. It gives this quality of being added on to over time, much like the ancient models on which this Tudor Revival style was based. These houses and manners took, you know, centuries to build. So this is really an intended effect by architects. They did this all the time during this period, where they were trying to create this gravitas and patina of age with this effect. And you really see it here on this facade. So this is just a slide that shows, you know, more of these details more closely that I talked about, the center pointed archway, the random stone that are mixed in. These are nice details. Also, the brick and stone patterns, they're all random, but very, you know, pleasing to look at, the stone buttress, and also this picturesque roof line with all these different materials and the random slate patterns in the roof.
Interrupt you for one minute. Miriam Chateno was on our commission, I believe, is listening. Miriam, you try and turn on your video. People would like to see you. Okay, go ahead, Ann.
Okay. While the Grace and Thomas buildings, both, both designed by James W. O'Connor for the Grace family, are more refined essays of the Tudor style, the Belgrade Motors nods to their designs, creating a dialogue between, that expands upon the earlier buildings at the center of Great Neck Plaza. Both of these are on the National Register and are local landmarks. The distinguishing corner tower or turret of the Grace building is embellished with this lovely diamond brickwork pattern, and, and that's reflected in the corner towers of the Belgrade Motors building. They both have these parapets as well. This is the Thomaston building, 1926. And while documentation of the architect of the Belgrade Motors building has not been found, it is possible that O'Connor designed it since the Wolf family had ties with the Grace family, and O'Connor was the Grace family architect. So in my opinion, I think this building is, as an architectural specimen, is more distinct and interesting and should be designated Thomaston landmark, as stated by AHRS. It satisfies the underlying portions of the village definition, the distinguishing characteristics of an architectural specimen, of a period, style, or method of construction. Not only is the integrity of the building intact, it's continued used as an auto showroom since 1931, and its place in the context of Great Neck and its architectural tradition makes it exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Now, we will, we will, I'd like to, yes, Tom?
Yeah, it's scary. When you have a moment, I do have a couple of questions for Ms. Walker.
Let's, let's just hold him for a minute, Karen. Let's get the whole public. I'd like to now put Nancy Solomon in as a panelist, Tom. She's, she's a historian of some, I, I think, she's been retained by residents. And again, Nancy.
Give me a moment.
If you begin by saying who has retained you, and then if you'd like to share the screen, we can accommodate that, and please limit yourself to five to 10 minutes maximum.
Just give me a moment to be able to get her in. Ms. Solomon, your video is off and your sound is off.
Okay, I'm going to stop.
It looks like Ann. I now recognize you.
Good evening, everybody. And let me share my screen. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to talk. Just by way of introduction, I was the, the preservation consultant to the Village of Great Neck Plaza, beginning in approximately 2003 until 2012. And I've continued to advise their Preservation Commission on various matters. And one of my first responsibilities was to conduct a historical survey that identified several historical buildings within the village that the commission has been considering and has landmarked over the years. And so I just wanted to give more of a historical background as to, you know, where Tower Ford fits into this picture. So to go back to 1866, the Flushing-Northside Railroad, which later became the Port Washington branch of the Long Island Railroad, was extended from Flushing to Great Neck. And as a result of this extension, several investors began to buy land on the North Shore during 1880 to 1900 in the hopes of spring development in the small, what was then a small farm town, and creating the summer estates for the new elite and celebrity classes. As we know, William K. Vanderbilt constructed Motor Parkway, a toll road that went from Queens to his estate in Ronkonkoma, so that other estate owners could drive and style in their new automobiles. And during the same period, Queens Boulevard was widened and extended to Nassau County as Jericho Turnpike, and was paved along with some other former truck routes, including Sunrise Highway. At the same time, Northern Boulevard was also widened to two lanes. Now, in 1898, the railroad was updated with new stations and better connections to New York City. And in 1903, the train line was electrified along certain portions with the train turnaround located at the side of St. Paul's Church on Grace Avenue. By 1912, the entire Port Washington branch was electrified, and this, you know, completed the connections to New York City, which is why many people started to move to Great Neck during this period.
Ms. Solomon, I don't know if you intend this to be a slideshow that changes slides, but you're still on the first slide.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry. So this is what Middle Neck looked like, you know, Middle Neck Road, when the, when the train line was extended, the Robertson Block had just been erected. And these, these are some of the earlier advertisements in some of the New York City newspapers, trying to spur development, you know, to the, what we now know as the Gold Coast Estate. And here we show, you know, you know, the first, you know, proper maps that were done around 1927. And we've just seen this, so we won't spend much time on this particular image. Now, by the time, you know, that all of these transportation infrastructures were finished, of course, we had the, the great first spur of the automobile coming to Long Island. And this began to happen by the early 1920s, when they began buying Fords, Cadillacs, and other luxury automobiles, driving to Great Neck to spend the weekend. And I'm showing this particular image. driving to Great Neck to spend the weekend. And I'm showing this particular image so you can see, you know, what was being advertised, so that people would start driving. And we've already learned about, you know, William R. Grace, you know, the former mayor of New York City, who decided to, you know, have an estate and, you know, help spur development for much of Great Neck. So everybody coming out in their automobiles, of course, they had to have people who knew how to take care of them and fix them, because of course those roads were pretty crummy, even, you know, with their widening and expansion. So there was a huge industry to help carry and supply fuel for these new automobiles. And so you started seeing, you know, the, the first Cadillac showroom. The telephone building is important because some of the people who actually worked there were driving, and so they needed places to park. And it was in that context that, of course, we see the creations of, of what we know as Tower Ford, Belgrave Motors. And, you know, this, these kinds of stylistic embellishments that Alice Walker referred to are critical, because many saw, you know, Great Neck as being another mini England, you know, with, you know, the Wingate section and many of the streets named after places in, in England as well. And in later years, what happened is, you know, beyond, you know, the advertisement, is the Federal Housing Administration started providing very low-cost loans to spur the development of garden apartments. And one of the major factors in the design of the garden apartments is that had to be parking for cars, because they wanted to make Great Neck, again, an automobile-friendly community. And so that's why you see, you know, so many of the underground apartments and garages attached to the buildings in Great Neck. And, you know, this, you know, this was, you know, you know, in 1937, they're advertising the fact that, you know, there were places where you could buy and service your cars in Great Neck. And, you know, there were other places that were also catering to that automobile center. The New York Sports Club was originally an automobile dealership office. And of course, we know about the Cadillac Building. And the C V S Pharmacy, that also started as a garage. And when, when water makers, you know, decided that they wanted to have a suburban department store, which is around the same time that Lord and Tail and the Miracle Mile are being developed, they decided they had to, you know, have enough parking, you know, so that people would drive to the store and not just depend on local foot traffic. So, you know, what I think is, you know, really important to, to understand, you know, you know, from a historical perspective, is that, you know, the Tower Ford is really one of those pristine gems and, and reminders of, you know, the history of this village, you know, both of Thomaston and all the surrounding villages that are part of Great Neck. And the automobile centrality, you know, to the history of this peninsula, you know, is, is critical to understand and to recognize, you know. We do lose these places, and, you know, this provides a, a critical opportunity, you know, to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate that. Next, I'd like to call on, there's some, again, people are texting and so on, I find confusing, but anybody who wants to speak, after our kind of experts have spoken, we were going to open up the floor, as I said before, to the general public. But let's keep going here. And another person who residents asked me to permit to speak, I'm not quite sure in what capacity, if she's a resident or a consultant, but she'll tell us, and whether she's been engaged by anybody, is Julie Georgopoulos, who requested about five minutes to make her presentation. Can we admit her to the, as a panelist?
I'm just trying to find her. I assume that's Julie G.
It must be, yeah. Julie, you're on mute. Oh, there you go. We don't see you, though.
Eric, can you see me now?
Now we can. How are you? Would, would you like to share the screen at all?
Yes, I do, actually.
Before we start, may I, again, ask Ms. Chattonover to turn on her video, please?
And Julie, just let us know in what capacity you're here tonight. Are you a resident or a Great Neck person, or are you a consultant, or what capacity are you here?
So actually, I'm a second-generation Great Neck resident, first-generation Thomaston resident. So I'll just share my screen if you can see.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you. So so actually, just a little bit about me, I'm an architect. I specialize in restoration and historic preservation, and considering this is happening in our neighborhood, I've been really excited and interested about the conversation of potentially landmarking this really beautiful old building that I grew up looking at. So anyway, this is a little bit, I think some of these slides are a little redundant, but just touching upon the history of the National Register of Historic Places, I think A H R S did a good job of explaining kind of the, the laws and how they affect our local ordinances. The State Historic Preservation Office obviously has adopted those laws and maintains the New York State CRIS database. This is just an interesting snippet here. I wanted to share this because this shows all the buildings that have been evaluated in our neighborhood by the New York State system. And you could see Great Neck Plaza is really diligent about documenting and evaluating their historic buildings. So you could see all these different dots. Thomaston is kind of this lower corner, which has almost no dots, but hopefully, one, one day, we could be looking like Great Neck Plaza and really considering the history of our, our older structures as valuable. And just because we're focusing on Belgrave Motors tonight, this is the eligibility evaluation form that was prepared by Jennifer Betsworth in New York State. Again, it was embodying the distinctive characteristic of type, period, of method of construction, criterion C. And just to quote, what she stated is that many early buildings in the area used the Tudor revival style, which was popular in new suburban developments in the region during the period. It played an important role in facilitating suburban growth during this period. And the Tudor revival style, as others have mentioned, sort of gave this new technology a a sense of history and a sense of place in a historic neighborhood. So just a little bit about Belgrave Square. This is a 1909 Sanborn map. The, the orange square there is what was known as Allen Farm. It was originally under the ownership of W. R. Grace and the early teens. Here we can see an ad that was in the Great Neck Public Library, which showed that Grace Estates essentially managed all of their properties and oversaw development. So the image on the left indicates that they were managing the development of Belgrave Square, so they were very heavily involved in the subdivision and the sale of properties, along with the development of all of these houses and and the apartment building, as well as Belgrave Motors. So this was in, this survey is from 1927. This Sanborn map is actually a little bit older. It's from 1926. And here we can see that on the property where Belgrave Motors and the Belgrave Apartments are currently situated, there used to be a one-family house. And according to our Great Neck records, this one-family house was physically relocated to Brompton Road for the development of these properties. And then here's a later map, 1928, which shows the construction of the Belgrave, which is in progress. We can see that this was one of the big developments that was happening within this restricted residential district, as the zoning laws indicated that at that time. And again, this is the later Sanborn map that others have shown. What's important to note is that this building was built in 1931. And again, this was within a restricted residential district, so it was built of fireproof construction. I suspect that this was done because it was a non-conforming use within a residential, a residential district. So this is actually, the fact that it's constructed out of concrete and concrete walls and stone is something that's really special, because other buildings in our neighborhood, I think there's only one other fireproof building on Middle Neck Road, which is the bank on Grace Avenue that's completely fireproof. So this is, makes it a very permanent, robust structure. And again, this is the, the property card of the building that gives us a little bit more history about it and really describes the, the use of it, the, the age of construction, all of the little details, skylights, balconies, towers on every corner, again, describing the construction technology that was utilized. And as others have described, this photo is essentially showing what it was, what it looked like in the 50s. And this is what it looks like today. And again, it retains all of its original architectural characteristics, as described on the Sanborn maps and on the property card. And I think what's really nice to, to note about this building is that traditionally, buildings were always designed, commercial properties were always designed with elaborate, street-facing facades, but when they designed this building, they really took into consideration that you were always going to be seeing it in three dimensions. So they really took their time to design the secondary facades as well. And it's important, because when you're entering Great Neck Plaza or coming into town, this is the first really large commercial building that you're seeing, and it's sort of like a bookend to, to the historic, to the work of the village that you're entering. So I think it's a really special building to be seeing along Middle Neck Road as you're entering. It's not just a, a quote-unquote taxpayer, is what they were not permitted to build. So, and then I'll just touch upon a little bit the village code. I think others have discussed that, but it's, there's key terms here which talk about embodying the distinguishing characteristics and being on any list maintained by the, by the state of New York. And again, this wording is on the designation, or in the research evaluation, rather, which says it embodies the distinctive characteristics of a place, method of construction, and represents the work of a master or possesses artistic values, which I think many people agree that this building does. So I think that's it for me, but I am for the landmarking of this building, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Julie. Okay, there are one and maybe two others, I think, that are experts that want to make presentations. The first we'll do is Simeon Bankoff. Simeon, I hope, please, please try not to repeat. I don't think there's been a lot of repetition yet, and it, just keep that in mind. Please explain who's retained you. I believe you are an expert that's retained by certain residents. Please say who those are. And then, again, limit yourself to five to 10 minutes, please. So let's let in Simeon Bankoff. Residents may remember that Simeon was one of the two finalists that the commission was deciding between in terms of our own consultant, and I'm, you know, we wouldn't have been on that list unless we thought he was highly qualified. And there he is. Simeon, how are you?
Good, Don. Thank you so much for running this meeting and for giving me the opportunity to talk. Just, I have been retained by Nancy Sherman and Wendy Halpern and a group of Great Neck residents to sort of evaluate the whole process. I'm just very honored to do so. So briefly, let me, can I share screen here?
Sure. Yes, go right ahead.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Let me just find my share screen button. Here we go. Boom. And then we're going to share the screen. Let's do it this way. Okay, very briefly, my name is Simeon Bankoff. I was, I've been active in historic preservation professionally in and around New York City for 25 years. I served as the executive director of the Historic Districts Council, which is a citywide advocate for New York, for New York City areas, during which time I worked on the designation of over 500 locally designated historic districts and extensions, and over 100 locally designated landmarks, during which time I also evaluate community requests for landmark designation and advise on the merit and feasibility of them, including sometimes saying, I'm sorry, I know you love this building, but I don't think it's really worthy of being landmarked. That additionally, I've given a lot of workshops, taught about historic preservation, and in fact, consulted in the village of Great Neck Plaza for training their own L P C about goodness 14 years ago. All right, so um, I'd like to sort of touch very quickly on the code. I know a number of people have talked about it already, and they did A H R did a wonderful job. But I'd like to simply note, there is, and I there is that the conservation and protect, the conservation, protection, and preservation of these old properties is a public necessity, not a public nicety, but a necessity for that promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. So that's pretty strong language. I just want to sort of put that in, in context. I also would like to just talk a little about an interesting thing in the code, which is it talks about how the L P C shall approve or disapprove a request within 60 days after this meeting. Such request is considered. But then it talks about, and this was very interesting to me, that the Board of Trustees may overrule a determination by the commission to disapprove a request, which actually is not how it works at all in New York City, which is the ordinance I'm most familiar with. In that case, the, the mayor and the city council have determinative powers. And also that the Board of Trustees may affirm or modify a determination of the commission to approve a request. What this means is that the commission, the Thomaston Landmarks Commission is wonderfully independent of politics. And in fact, it seems that from my reading of it, that the Board of Trustees does not actually have the statutory authority to deny a landmark should this commission choose to move forward with, which frankly, I would love to see in New York City. So good job drafters of the Thomaston Code. Want to bring that up. Now, let's talk about what landmark designation is and the importance of it. It preserves and enhances a character, an area's physical character, which is called a sense of place, which is distinct individuality that characterizes one community from another physically. Its purest form, this is a quality that brands a neighborhood or a person, when visiting elsewhere, might say, this street really reminds me of Boston. It's particularly important in places like Thomaston, which exist in close proximity to other areas with similar or shared development histories. What are the distinctive elements that give physical form to each village? Communities such as these often share a common urban design language in terms of streetscape elements and general scale of development. You might even sort of feel lost going from one to the next, but what these pleasing commonalities do is they emphasize the importance of the landmarks, of the distinctive churches, the former movie theaters, the singular commercial buildings. These outliers serve to orient the passersby and residents alike by truly marking the land with a presence. Take a left one block past the church on Northern Boulevard, and it'll be half a block down on the right, is a very human way of seeing, of giving directions and really seeing your world. So that's, that's one of the importances of, of landmarking. Another one is that retains the history of an area. Not only is the history of, of the whole development, but the history of everyone who's ever lived in these landmark buildings or passed them by. By preserving the existence of the building or street or neighborhood, it keeps the door open to the past and provides a distinct continuity with the future. People can move out of the neighborhood. This happens in where I grew up, in Brooklyn, which has been completely ravaged by inappropriate development. You don't recognize it anymore, but in areas that have preservation, even if they're preserving the one singular building, that gives you a connection to the past. Finally, landmark designation guarantees community input in new development. Here is an example of a proposal that I saw back in August in Douglasston, New York, in Douglasston, Queens. And by preventing, by disallowing, as a right development, landmark designation provides a forum for the community to discuss and help determine its own future development. By doing this, it also holding, by holding all development activity to a high equal level of standard, the base level design is, is, within a community, is increased. I promise not to show too many bad things, but, so you look at this, and the one on, the one on the, my right, is the proposal. This is the existing building, just to give you a sense of what building was. It's nice. It could use some work, honestly, but this is what they proposed to do, which fortunately, the Landmarks Preservation Commission denied, because it was based on a completely no respect for the original design and no respect for the neighborhood. So now let's get to the, the former Belgrave Motors Building. I'm not going to really touch, Anne did a great job, as did A H R, but about, about it, but it is important to note that the, the Leftquits's son, the Leftquits family is very involved in this. The Leftquits has developed it, as Anne had mentioned. They'd also developed the same, developed the Belgrave Apartments. And that this building meshes nicely with the same kind of design. And also, the, the same context, and Anne talked about the Tudor revival. The Tudor revival is a, is a continuing theme throughout Great Neck. We have here the Grace Building, designed as mentioned before by James O'Connor, the go-to architect for the We have here the Grace Building designed as mentioned before by James O'Connor, the go-to architect for the Grace Company. Here's the Thomaston Building, you all know it. And what this does, what is interesting here is that it gives a, it makes people feel more comfortable with this world-changing technology. Here is in 1936, they are using their building as an advertisement, but they are also talking about how they've been in the community for 20 years. You should trust them. You should feel warmly towards it. Ordinarily, when you hear about car dealerships, they're talking about new cars, but instead they're saying we here and we have been part of the community. That being said, and Nancy had spoken a bit about the importance of the cars and car culture. Let's look at the Lincoln Building. You know, thank you very much, HR, for this wonderful picture, which as Jason had mentioned, it's not as good a building. It has been altered from and more modified than the Belgrave Towers building. So here you can see, again, you've got some signage and replacement windows. But as opposed to this, which is actually a landmark building within Roseland, this is the far superior of the type. So to sum up, we have the reasons to landmark, I feel strongly, the former Belgrave Motors building is that the, the value of landmark designation to the general welfare of the community, as we talked about, that it promotes the general welfare, as I said, it's in the code, that the architectural aesthetic contributions building makes to the community. For people who visit, I've only been to Thomaston a less than a handful of times, frankly. But you notice it when you come into the, to the, to the town. The significance of this building to the development heritage of the region and also the overwhelming public support for this designation. This has become a true cause celebre and something that the whole community's rallied around, which I think is, is a wonderful and very, very important thing and a very positive thing. So I would like to leave you with this. This is, as, as you're familiar, especially Ms. Mattson, this is the Village of Thomaston from 1976. And the dedication says, "This informal village history prompted by the celebration of our nation's bicentennial anniversary is affectionately dedicated to all Thomaston residents, past, present and future." And that was 40 some odd years ago. I think that the future is perhaps now. And then finally, a great quote by John Kenneth Galbraith, "Which is the preservation movement has one great curiosity. There's never been, there is never retrospective controversy or regret. Preservationists are the only people in the world who invariably confirmed in their wisdom after the fact. In my time in this field, I've never once heard someone say, gosh, it's the worst thing in the world that we saved that building." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simeon. You know, at one point there was an architect, Andrew Cronson, who wanted to speak as well. We, we allowed him to speak to our consultant. I think probably most of what he wants is included there. I'd like to move along. I think I'll skip you, Andrew. If you have other comments to make, please make them in the public session and of course submit them in writing to us. But I think we've probably covered enough of that for now. I want to make sure we give the owner and the owner's representative a chance to speak now, after which we're going to go to people in the public. I think, I, I'm not positive of the names, but I think the owner's lawyer, I believe, is Stephen Limmer. I don't know if he's speaking. Is he on the list, Tom?
He is on, yes, he's in the, in attendance.
Let's put him in as a panelist. He'll tell us whether he.
Let me ask if, if he's interested in it, perhaps he could raise his hand and we could then bring him in. Not, not seeing anything.
He, he said he wanted to make, make some comments.
All right, let me.
Here he comes.
Okay. So he's coming in as a panelist. It's up to him if he wishes to speak.
Mr. Limmer, we don't see you or hear you at the moment.
I'm here.
Okay. First, please tell us exactly who you represent and also how you'd like to use the time if somebody else from the owner is going to speak or how you'd like to structure this.
No, I'll be speaking to the owner. It's Stephen Limmer of McLaughlin and Stern, 1122 Franklin Avenue.
By the way, no relation to me, absolutely no relation, but go ahead.
No relation at all. Garden City, New York, 11530. The bottom line, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you for allowing me to speak, is that I am seeking an adjournment of a decision by the commission for 120 days. Mr. Levin will advise you on the law, but my understanding that the 60 days requirement for you to make your decision is basically for the benefit of the owner to protect the owner because during the period that the decision is pending, the building department can't issue any permit that would significantly alter, demolish or otherwise affect any proposed landmarking of the building. And any landmarking would have a significant impact upon the owner. And not only has your expert testified, but other experts has testified. And the, my client needs time to respond to those comments and to determine what the economic impact would be if the building was landmarked. And, and now let me just go a little further with regard to the history that's been discussed. The last thing mentioned by Mr. Bankoff was the Village of Thomaston publication in 1976 with the dedication which he rendered. And in that, in that pamphlet that was, that was provided, there's a page that shows a walking tour. And the walking tour has 16 locations within the Village of Thomaston. Four of them are actually in the, what's called the Belgrave Avenue. One of them I misnoted in my email to you when I sent these documents to you, to which I refer, I thought referred to the Brompton Building, but it's actually a house on the Brompton property. But none of those, nothing in this brochure or on that walking tour included the subject building, even though four of the buildings that are included are in close proximity in the Belgrave area. There is a picture of other buildings in the area. There's the Great Neck Towers Apartments on 16. One of your, one of the experts mentioned the Brompton Apartments and how significant that was. But historically, again, there's a history of Thomaston on the village website and which I've included in the package I gave to you. And there's homes honored with Great Neck Historical Society plaques, Heritage Recognition Program. And again, with all of those buildings and structures, until my client made an application to develop the subject property with a multifamily dwelling, nobody has ever sought to landmark this building. It is my belief that basically this outpouring of community support for landmarking is more to prevent the building that was then proposed than it is actually the concern about the landmarking. Now that may have changed for some people and there may be some indications from some of the people who spoke who might support that. My client would like the opportunity to refute those comments, indicate why it shouldn't be landmarked and to determine what the adverse economic impact might be if it is landmarked. Additionally, my client knows that the building that was proposed is never going to be approved and it has to be changed. And my client seeks to develop a proposed project that the, that the village would approve and would be fitting. Now, going to the aspect of zoning, which is what we're really talking about in a sense with regard to this property as well, is village zoning is supposed to have a common plan or scheme. The common, common plan or scheme for this building, as much of Middle Neck Road, south of the tracks, is apartment building. Now, this, this automobile dealership has been allowed to remain by being grandfathered because of the investment in that building. But the concept of grandfathering buildings is that eventually those non-conforming buildings will be replaced with a conforming building. And what all my client seeks to do is to build a conforming building, to, to build a building that will be a multifamily dwelling for which this property, this built property is zoned. Now, it feels that it believes it can come up with a building that will be acceptable to the community and accept to the, acceptable to the village. Just bowing to community pressure without a sufficient basis has been thrown out by the courts numerous times. The decision is for you to make, not based upon how many people are for it or against it. We're not asking you to make a decision tonight. We're just asking you to withhold making a decision for 120 days so that my client can adequately make a presentation to protect its interests. That's what we're seeking and that's what we would appreciate if you would provide us with that opportunity. As I said, nothing's going to happen to this building during that period of time. No building permit can be issued under your village code that would allow it to be altered in any way that would adversely impact the facade or otherwise the landmarking of the building. And my client is committed not to seek a building permit to do any of that. So that is my request. I'm not here as an expert. I'm not here knowing, you know, landmark law or anything like that. It's really just to protect my client's very significant investment in this building and giving it a fair opportunity to respond to what you're hearing tonight and to make a presentation in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Limber. Is there anybody else on the behalf of the owner or the owner himself would like to speak at this time?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I think with that, we'll go on to the individual comments. Before we do that, I wanted to note a couple of things. I guess I've already said that we've received a large number of emails and correspondence. It's all been tabulated. The, the correspondence is all on the website, as is the table that indicates all the correspondence, almost like a table of contents kind of thing. At our first meeting on November 30th, I spoke about the commission's responsibility in this matter, which is to decide whether or not to designate 124 South Middle Neck Road as a landmark under the code. As I mentioned at that meeting and as our council has confirmed to us, the commission is not required to designate as a landmark a structure which fits within the definition of the code. It may designate such a structure as a landmark. Or stated differently, it's necessary in order for us to designate a building as a landmark that it fit within the definition. That's not sufficient. So how we decide what to do, what are the factors we're supposed to consider? And I think first and most important seems to me, or at least of equal importance, is it doesn't fit within the definition. And we've had a lot of discussion tonight from a lot of people with a lot of expertise on that issue. The second is a little harder and as I understand the legal advice, the commissioners are supposed to take into account other factors that they deem relevant to decide whether the designation is in the best interest of the village and its residents. And relevant factors could include things such as the importance of the building, the architecture and history of the village, the negative impact on the village and nearby residents if the property is not designated as a landmark, the impact of the designation, designation on future uses of the site, whether the destination could adversely affect the continued maintenance and occupancy of the building or a road to property tax base of the village. Additional factors may be relevant and all factors need to be considered by this commission and weigh. That is why the decision is not, to my mind, automatic or simple. So when the public comments tonight that are going to follow, I encourage speakers to address all the relevant issues, not just whether this fits within the definition of landmark. I think we'll begin now, I guess, two other things. First, a petition was submitted shortly before we began with 209 names on it. Some are residents, some are of Thompson, some are not. They're all seem to be local people. But I was asked to read the petition. It's not terribly long, so I think I will read it. And then I received an email from a resident who asked that it be read and I'll do that and then we'll go on to the public comment. So I'll just read this petition. It's on the website, but it's short, so I'll read it. "Petition to landmark Tower Ford Building, the historic Belgrave Motors Building formerly known as Tower Ford and now Beaner Audi, has set gracefully welcoming everyone into the Great Neck area with its distinctive architecture for the past 90 years, but now is at risk of demolition and replacement. The New York State Historic Preservation Office has already confirmed that this building meets the criteria to be placed on both state and national registers of historic places, but the decision rests with the Village of Thomaston. The Landmark Preservation Committee of the Village of Thomaston Great Neck will decide at the fate of this beautiful structure in the coming weeks. They have stated that they want to be fair to the residents of this village as well as to the owner of the property, recently submitted an application under the much objected to incentive law to demolish this lovely Tudor Revival style building and replace it with a five-story glass monster luxury rental building. The application's incentive law is already subject to a lawsuit filed by residents in Thomaston. Don't let them tear down this cherished building. It still has plenty of life and can be repurposed for many different uses and is structurally sound and historic gem. Great Neck risks losing an important part of not just our local history, but of US history if this demolition is allowed to proceed. The loss of this landmark structure and its replacement will have a long-term negative impact on the community as the town loses its authentic identity, as we lose the history and character of our great neighborhood. The Village of Thomaston Historic Preservation Committee Design Review Board and the current owners should do everything in their power to stop the demolition of this structure and designate this building as historic in order to save it for future generations." And that's a petition that was signed by, I think, if I have the number right, 209 names. Again, I didn't count how many were residents and none, but they're all seem to be local people. And then we received an email today. I, I think it came to Karen. Karen, I'm going to take the liberty of, of the, the name of the person is Leah and she's a friend of yours, Karen. So I don't know her last name. Do you often know Leah's last name?
Lee Kaplan with a C.
Okay, Lee Kaplan. So she, and I want to just read what she wrote. She wrote, "I understand the Belgrave Motors Building satisfies the definition and is due the distinction of landmark. What latitudes or barriers come with that for the current future owner, including sale by owner? My specific concern is if the owner decides the cost of maintaining a landmark building, the cost is too high and decides to abandon the building. Will Thomaston and South Middle Neck Road have another empty storefront on our hands? Landmark distinction is all well and good until it becomes a dilapidated landmark." Okay, now we're going to proceed to the public comments. Again, as I said at the outset, we're going to limit everyone to two minutes. We're going to enforce that to be fair to everybody and it is getting late. I want to make sure everybody who wants to speak has a chance. We're going to call on people once and you'll have two minutes. Please announce your name. Keep in mind, if there are other things you want to say, you're always welcome to send us something in writing, which we will read before we make any decision. So I guess people put up their hands and Tom, you keep track so we don't call on the same person twice.
There were four, there were four people whose hands are raised right now. Ronald Brennan, Nina Gordon, Aaron Halpern and Ellen Monis.
So you, you go ahead, Tom, and you pick and we're all ears.
Well, I have them here in alphabetical order, so we'll, we'll do it that way. Mr. Brennan is first.
You know, I'm going to, I, we're going to keep time here and I'm going to be the timekeeper.
Mr. Brennan, you're muted.
Okay, I just unmuted myself.
There we go.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, then I, my name is Ronald Brennan. I live in Great Neck, been in Great Neck since 1980 and enjoyed the incredible historic architecture and the Tudor style that's all over our wonderful town, actually. And I, I had been working closely with those who wanted to restore the Stepping Stones Lighthouse, which is 1875. And I mean, it is, these are historic gems. To me, the building that we're talking about, the tower building, is absolutely priceless. I, I enjoy looking at every single detail of that building. And I know that it would be impossible to replicate that building in today's world, in today's economy and finding the, the people who can actually create that piece of work. I don't know where, I don't know where on earth that would come from. And I'm just so supportive of the efforts of the community to retain that building. And the idea is to convert it and use it for community purposes or cultural or artistic or other uses. Okay, in 30 seconds, I'll just say, I think it's Thomaston's responsibility to maintain it and to create a balanced solution. And I also wanted to commend you, Mr. Stern, on a fantastic meeting that you managed this evening. It was the difference between night and day, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom, who do we have next?
The next on the list is Nina Gordon. I'm going to bring her in. Ms. Gordon, you're muted.
Hi, thank you. Okay. I have been a Great Neck resident since 1961. I grew up in Kensington, which is another neighborhood full of Tudor revival structures. And I watched my childhood home get knocked down and replaced with a fairly ordinary mini mansion. And it really is sad to see this continue to happen throughout Great Neck. And I don't really want to address whether or not it's worth landmarking. I really think that's been proven tonight. The owner's representative said he wants to refute it. I don't really think there's anything to refute. I was struck by the knowledge, I never knew that this building is fireproof. And it struck me that if you want to convert it into housing, there must be a way to retain the architecture and turn it into some kind of, I think the fact that it's fireproof would be a huge asset. As an older person still living in Great Neck, where there was a fire in my co-op last year, I think that would be a tremendous asset. If you built a community of apartments, fireproof is a great thing to, you know, besides the obvious architectural value to it. So I urge you to think carefully and consider the ways in which the owner can make a profit and the community can be satisfied. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tom, who's next?
Mr. Halpern is next. I'm bringing him in. Mr. Halpern, yes, okay, you're unmuted.
Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for calling on me. The first thing I just want to address, I know my time is limited, although I do reserve the right to speak further to address anything else if I can't fit it within the time. But the request that we just heard by, I believe it was Mr. Limer, the 120-day adjournment request, I vehemently oppose that adjournment request. I note that we had requested just a two-week adjournment, which was never granted because we were up against holidays and with the village's own experts. And there was absolutely no basis that was offered by Mr. Limer as to why he needed an adjournment. The issue as far as landmarking was raised months ago, in fact, in August. And this was not a new issue. There was no issue raised as far as a lack of notice that this was a landmark meeting that was called back in November after the commission was assembled in August. And as far as the opportunity to refute, the developer, the building owner, whoever Mr. Limer represents, has had more than ample opportunity to offer any opinion, to refute, make any findings, retain any experts. They clearly spent thousands of dollars on the project, and it's designed to fast-track it to destroy the property and rebuild it with what they proposed. With regard to what you've heard, obviously, we've heard several consultants retained by both the village and by the residents. And it's undisputed that they've said that this building structure satisfies the landmark designation. You haven't heard anything to the contrary, other than from Mr. Limer, who indicated already represented his sole interest is that of the property owner, Mr. Bankoff, who was one of the final nominees of the village commission.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to stop there, but if there's more time, if other people have not spoken, we'll come back to you. I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance first. So thank you, Aaron. We'll come back to you with more time, and you can always submit your comments in writing.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but this is a meeting, and I'd like to have the opportunity.
We will come back to you if there's time. Tom, let's have the next person.
All right, just a second. The next person is Ellen Monas. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. And please unmute.
Hi, okay, I'm just going to bring up that the 120 days is ridiculous. They've had months. If they didn't use that time, that's their problem. The other thing is that they talk about, if you build a building and it's a rental, it's going to devastate our tax program because there are going to be a lot of kids, and it costs a lot of money, and they don't pay the taxes. The building will put in two free buildings, apartments, and then they won't have to pay taxes for 10 years. Plus the fact, I've been here for 60 years, and when people come to visit, I say, "Bake it left before the rebel grave Oldsmobile," and they find my house immediately. What am I going to do if it disappears? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom, who's next?
Alka Jane is the next speaker. Ms. Jane, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. I would like to make a few points regarding tonight's hearing. Economic, Mr. Limer, the owner's lawyer, just said something about economic impact. And I would like to point out to this committee that economic impact is irrelevant, completely irrelevant, to the decision to landmark by this committee. It is actually clearly written in your rules that you should be not looking at economic impact at all. There are plenty of grants and funding available to existing landmark structures to make them successful. And therefore, in answer to Dr. Siegel's friend who sent an email, dilapidation is a choice that an owner makes, and it's a choice they make to turn down funds to keep a landmarked building alive and well and repurposed. So that should not be a good reason for this committee to use. Secondly, the first petition that was signed by over 1,000 residents included clear language to preserve the existing building. So for Mr. Limer to say that preservation and landmarking wasn't an issue from the very beginning is completely untrue. Landmarking was not previously sought because nobody thought somebody would be greedy enough to tear this building down. If the owner is only putting monetary conditions and considerations, as we just heard, then the committee's job is to do the right thing here and put the architectural and historical conditions as part of your decision, as you're supposed to be doing. And finally, zoning is not an issue of this committee. It is the issue of a lawsuit where residents have been outraged enough to file a lawsuit as Mr. Limer's client sought to railroad through all the local zoning and architectural laws to benefit only themselves.
Few seconds.
This commission does its job according to the rules because residents are already angry at the double standards so far.
All right, thank you. Tom, who's next? We'll come back to these people if there's, you know, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk a little bit, but we'll come back.
Andrew Cronson is next.
Okay, good, Andrew.
Go ahead, Mr. Cronson.
Hi, Andrew. I cut you out before, Andrew, because I knew you had made a presentation already. But if there are things that you would like to say, I don't want to edit what you have to say. I just don't, I want to avoid repetition if we can in deference to everybody who'd like to speak. But go ahead.
I would then request additional time to be able to speak to what I was going to speak to, since there was additional information that was not presented prior.
All right, would you like, would five minutes do it?
It's more than 10, but if I get five, I'll take five.
Why don't we try five minutes, and why don't we do it right now? Let's share the screen.
Okay. Thank you for this moment.
Trying to get all the experts to have a little extra time to give us the benefit of their expertise.
A moment, I got to get my thing here.
Yeah.
So I was planning on not speaking at that moment. Okay, start me now.
I will, go ahead.
Thank you. So in trying to do this very briefly, there are a number of myths that are out there within sort of the current culture about what landmarking is or isn't. And there's so much information out there, much like misinformation about the COVID pandemic. There's misinformation largely fueled by political animus about how landmarking works and its effects on people's property. There is the idea that historic properties are worth less when they are designated. An empirical, peer-reviewed research has shown that homes in historic districts, specifically in most usually landmarked properties, are actually worth more than those that are not throughout the country. There's another myth that landmark properties are set at ember. That is not correct. They are able to have changes that are made, but they're made to be appropriate and sympathetic within the context of the community. And as Mr. Bankoff noted, it raises the bar of construction for all properties when they are able and required to have a high standard of construction and design. Lastly, historic properties and landmark properties can be demolished. They are unfortunately certain instances where they can be. However, by and large, they are usually not made. Owners do not take a hardship clause, and they are generally protected in good hands for future generations. We should also note that expert opinions in favor of landmarking, the consultant that the village hired, and two consultants that were paid for out of pocket by concerned residents have also come to the same conclusion that this building merits landmark designation. Additionally, other groups like Preservation Island, which is the region's preservation advocate, as well as the overarching Preservation League of New York State, which covers preservation for the entire state, have also endorsed this, as well as the New York State Historic Preservation Office, which is the authority on preservation for New York State. All of these people have come to the same exact conclusion. This warrants landmarking and should be done as such. We need to note that these plaques, while there are many plaques around Great Neck, they are lovely, they're colorful, but they are not a landmark designation. They have no teeth, they have no enforcement, and you could tomorrow demolish every single one of them if you wanted. They will not protect any building to be here later on for my generation and future generations. We also need to note that salvaging a building like what was done at the Great Neck Playhouse is not the same as a landmark designation. Salvaging and incorporating historic elements is lovely, but it is not the same as endorsing and landmarking for an entire building, so it is protected, codified with teeth. We should also note that Innervada, which is in North Hills Menhasset, is a very good case study to look at the importance of advocacy and landmarking and protecting resources. Like Tower Ford, it was declared as eligible for the National Register, but North Hills, much like Thomaston, never surveyed their properties or enacted a landmarks law. North Hills' lawyer, A. Thomas Levin, who is on this call, hello, Mr. Levin, is the same lawyer that they had at the time, and I believe is still their lawyer. He had the view as a village, and I quote basically, "that there is nothing they can do to prevent a lawful demolition permit. They've a view that is undoubtedly pro-property rights held above all of the factors that protect the public interest and the public for which they are supposed to serve as a village government. As long as it's technically legal, it is all kosher for them." They also had the same mentality in a plan to clear-cut the only mapped oak-tula forest in Nassau County to build a Ritz-Carlton North Hills complex. This was not knowingly a declared archaeologically sensitive, critical, and special groundwater protection area. Any impediment in the process is viewed as standing in the way of progress. No sacrifice, it seems, is too great to our wildlife, plant life, water quality, and air quality. In 2013, Innervada was put up for sale in potential demolition, and the note that idea, it was declared as slightly blighted. However, this photo, which I took the last day it was opened, shows that it was not blighted. It was not beyond repair, and it was still intact and in great character. It was demolished after being purchased by an anonymous Hong-Hong-based developer. Despite being eligible for the National Register, North Hills refused their discretion to intervene and mandate reuse in some capacity to build houses around it or allow a cool-off period to assess their options for review. It is a tragedy only comparable to the loss of Penn Station. Nothing has been built there on that property, however, it was just resold a month ago for $33 million off a list of $100 million. I'm going to skip the portion on James O'Connor because we don't have time to do that. But I'm just going to note that he was a very significant architect. We believe that he was the architect of this building. There is a very similar design to the building in Thomaston, which are landmarked, and they are also significant as far as being noted across the street, basically, diagonally across the street. And there's a dialogue between the buildings that O'Connor designed in Thomaston, I'm sorry, in Great Neck Plaza, and the one that we have in Thomaston. Unlike Thomaston, the Great Neck Plaza Village has taken the time to survey and landmark their properties. Thomaston has not. And it is very unfortunately a lack of forethought to have done that originally because we now have to address these issues under threat instead of being done proactively. They know what their historic buildings are, and they have taken the time to understand them, survey them, and landmark them. There's an example of a survey. One thing that comes up again and again in Great Neck is the loss of the Playhouse, which was left abandoned, unlandmarked for nearly 10 years and was allowed to be demolished recently. People ask, "How could this happen?" Well, Great Neck Estates has no landmarks law, even for one of the most important sites in Great Neck. Well, it could have been reused as apartments. Nothing was there to prevent demolition by neglect, which was allowed to be an empty storefront, empty building, an eyesore, and as well, a nuisance for people to trespass. And there was nothing to stop that. Without having a historical society to be effective as an advocate, there is nothing to be done, or really little to be done, without these landmark laws. And speaking to Elsa Kagan, who is their historian, she described as Great Neck's biggest shame. Luckily, there is hope. This year's Pritzker Prize, which is known as the Nobel Prize for Architecture, was won by a firm named Anne Leighton and Jean-Philippe Vassal, who have never demolished a building. They see it as an act of vandalism and choose to transform what exists there instead. And this is very fitting in light of the current climate crisis we are in. The greenest building is the building that is already built and is standing. Getting to the end here. One concept that cannot be overstated is the beauty and value of adaptive reuse when a building is converted from its original use to a new one. This can be done really any building with a bit of ingenuity. In Belgrade Motors, Tower Ford could be anything from apartments to educational or religious use with the added benefit of its history and its build being fireproof to sit it apart from all the others in Great Neck. Looking to New York, and this is very key, some of its most successful sites for tourism, for economic productivity, are ones that are reused from the Tideline, the Chelsea Market, the Public Theater, the Empire Stores, and Dumbo. They are all reused historic buildings. Recently, the Moynihan Station behind Penn Station became out to critical acclaim, which was originally a mail sorting room with great steel trusses below the skylight. It is added to our landscape, and it's added to our community as one that is now cherished because it is reused. One other adaptive reuse property that has really taken a lot of attention is the reuse of one of the, I don't have the name off the top of my head, one of the former mental institutions, an asylum in Buffalo, which was abandoned, completely unsafe, uninhabitable, derelict for many years. And it was just transformed into a boutique hotel with great acclaim.
Andrew, it's nine minutes. Could you finish up? It's nine minutes in, go ahead.
Okay. It is a major tourism destination and is actually regarded as one of the world's greatest places. It boosts the economy, creates good jobs, is reopening in April. You can see a bank on Eighth Avenue in the city, which is a landmark now. It is now a CVS. The Martino Hall of Fordham was an automated garage, is now a dormitory. The most beautiful McDonald's in America was a farmhouse slated for demolition, and it was reused, adapted, and is actually a and it was reused, adapted, and is actually a boon, the only McDonald's probably in New York that is actually a tourist attraction, and it's put New Hyde Park in the regional and national map as a place to visit. Lord &amp; Taylor in Menhasset.
Andrew, we're kind of out of time. That's 10 minutes. You want to just sum up and take 10 seconds to sum up?
I think that we have heard from a community that is extraordinarily passionate about this building, passionate about its history, passionate about protecting what is there, and this board has an extraordinary important, extraordinarily important decision. It would be advocating its role to act in anything less than the public interest to be landmarked. Thank you for allowing me to present this.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, Tom, we'll go back to people who have their hands up who have not been called on yet.
The next person is just listed as Carol, so I will bring Carol in.
Carol, if you'd state your name for us, if you're a resident or not.
Yes, I'm Carol.
Something for you, sir?
No, I don't know what happened.
Carol, try again. We had you, we lost you.
Let me, let me try that again. I think that was Carol Frank. So Carol, I apologize. Let me find where you are here. Okay, I think I got it. I don't know what the problem is.
We come back to her? Do we go to somebody else and come back?
Let me, let me try one more time. Should be working now. Carol, you muted?
No.
Now we can.
Yeah.
I'm here tonight representing, speaking for the Great Neck Historical Society. We did send you a letter, and I'm not going to read that entire letter, but we strongly support landmarking this important building. It is one of many notable buildings that blend with the beautiful buildings that have been preserved successfully in Great Neck Plaza. As you know, we, we have a recognition program. Mr. Cronson is absolutely right. It has no teeth. We don't have the power to landmark. But we have witnessed the neglect and disrepair of notable buildings worthy of saving and know that if they are in shambles, developers will advocate for demolition. The Playhouse Theater is the most recent example of this sad process. We are currently working to save the Stepping Stones Lighthouse and the Saddle Rock Grist Mill, but their fates are uncertain. It is very heartening to see a new generation of passionate, eloquent residents rise up to fight against losing the Belgrave Motors Building. We often hear the lament, Great Neck is just not what it used to be. It is critical that we recognize and appreciate what has not been lost yet and what gives character to the look of our hometown. Buildings like Belgrave Motors are irreplaceable.
20 seconds.
And where the creative vision can be successfully repurposed. You, as commission members, are being given a great opportunity along with the power to do something beneficial for our whole community. We urge you to use that power to save this very special building.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate that. Tom, who's next?
Dr. Martin. Carol, apologies for the difficulty in getting you.
I don't know what happened.
You know I wouldn't do that to you. Dr. Martin should be coming in. Dr. Martin, please unmute.
Still on mute, I think.
Yes.
I don't know what the problem is. Dr. Martin, we can't see or hear you. Here we go.
No.
Good. We can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you. There we go. Both. Double. We got the bonus. How are you?
Hi, my comments are brief. The arrogance of the real estate is just untenable. And to present to us a building that is so completely inappropriate does not develop trust at all. It certainly doesn't make us believe that any degree of expectation can be met by these people. And my final word is, it is so close to one particular feature that deserves an appropriate name at this point, and I will end with that word: Trumpism.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's go to the next one, Tom.
All right, next is Lynn Zissman. Ms. Zissman, you should be getting a message to come in as a panelist.
You have to unmute there.
Ms. Zissman, you're muted.
There we go.
Okay. So I see this building as the gateway to our town, to Great Neck. It is the first historical piece, building that we see as we enter town. To destroy it would be a travesty. We need to protect this building. We need to landmark it, and it needs to stand forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Tom?
Just one second. All right, the next is Jeffrey Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz, you're muted.
Yeah. Yeah, I've lived in Great Neck Plaza. I'm the co-president of One Overlook across the street. And I've lived across from the site for over 40 years. I've watched the downtown change. I've watched efforts to revitalize the downtown, and I'll echo Lynn said about, you know, the Belgrave Motor Site and South Middle Neck Road being really the gateway to the peninsula. As we look to revitalize our downtown, to build upon what we have, and what we do have is was eloquently put by our panelists, our expert panelists, historical buildings in our downtown of Great Neck Plaza, East Bot Street, I believe it's 11 Middle Neck Road. These are intangibles. These are building blocks for going forward. And to replace this building with anything is just going to do further damage to the efforts to try and revitalize and to keep the character of the peninsula going forward. And I'll let go what everybody else said, but I just wanted that to be said because we need to hold on and build upon what we have, and putting an apartment house there is not going to do that. And I want to thank the panel and Mr. Stern for a well-run meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, who's next?
Next is Aaron Eggleman. Mr. Eggleman, you're muted.
Am I audible?
You are now. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll attempt to be brief. My name is Aaron Eggleman. I am a resident of 37 Brompton Road, and I also serve as board president for the Building Corporation. I'll just be echoing most of what, what's been said before by, you know, the excellent panelists here. I believe the Belgrave Motors Building is a unique gem that speaks to the character of this community. I think it is abundantly clear that the will of the residents is such that this building should be protected for both the current generation and generations to come. I think it's somewhat interesting in that there's such uniformity across many different experts that have weighed in on this question. So in my opinion, it's very clear how, how the Landmark Committee should proceed on this question and should absolutely grant landmark status to the building. And just as an aside, I would like to add that, you know, were that building to be knocked down, there's an additional risk that hasn't been brought up, and that is if a developer were to find themselves in a cash-strapped position mid-project, then we run the risk of having essentially an empty pit in our community in lieu of a historical building, something that would be greatly undesirable for all. Not merely for aesthetic reasons, but obviously for property value reasons as well. And while I don't generally put, speak for my residents and fellow shareholders in my building, I must say that on this subject of the landmarking of Belgrave, the Belgrave Motors Building, the overwhelming majority of the 37 units in my building greatly support such landmarking, and I thank the committee for the time.
Thank you, Aaron. Tom, who's next?
We have three people who have not spoken, and Mr. Halpern and Mr. Limer have asked to speak again, so we'll start with the ones who have not spoken.
Yes.
Wenji Chen is first. Ms. Chen, you're muted.
Hi.
That's good.
I'm a resident of Thomaston, so I moved to Green Neck two years ago from Manhattan, so which is the center of the city. I think the attraction of Green Neck for me is the environment and, you know, like also the historic attractions. So I also served right now as a board president of 130 South Middle Neck Road, and we are a building of 12 units, and all family here are young families. So we all raise kids here, and with the environment, and we enjoy the buildings right next to our building. So our buildings strongly support and to have a landmarking, this historic structure.
Thank you, and welcome to Thomaston.
Thank you.
Tom?
And Nicole Namius? Would you please unmute? Ms. Namius, you're muted.
Hi, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nicole Namius. I'm here with my family, my daughter, Olivia Namius. Hi, Olivia Namius. And my husband.
Stephen Pappas.
And we are shareholders here at 37 Brompton Road. We live right next door to the Tower Ford, and we are in favor of landmarking this building. It's a gem for our community, and I am in favor of everything that everybody has said on this meeting to support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to have a family participating. Thank you. Tom, who's next?
Next is Steve Zhang. Mr. Zhang, I'm trying to bring you in. Mr. Zhang, you should be getting a message to come in as a panelist. I don't know where Mr. Zhang is, so move on to the next. We have.
Here he is. He just has to unmute. Here he is.
Hello?
Hi there. Yes, we can.
Yeah, and, and happy new year, everyone. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I live Green Neck, Thomaston, over 18 years, and the, and the Fort Tower is the first iconic building when we drive into the Green Neck, which was very rich in the history and the culture. I support to save this building as landmark on the building. Also, I wish a landmark commission can support, can also save this building as landmark building on behalf of most, most residents in Thomaston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Let's see. We now have some more hands raised. Looking for people who have not spoken. Why Bin Zhang? Try that. Would you please unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Hi. First of all, I'm 100% in favor of landmarking this building. The expert already gave me enough information, so I don't want to repeat here. I urge the Landmark Commission to use this opportunity and use your power to make a judgment and decision based on what you heard tonight, not, not based on what our precedent may or won't. So, and as, as Mr. Chairman said a few times, we want to treat the developer, the property owner, and the residents equally. So if our request to adjourn the public hearing so that everyone joins a meeting wasn't accepted, I'm urging the commission to also reject the developer's request to adjourn the decision for 120 days. Because they already have enough time to provide information. They didn't do that. So the request to adjourn the decision doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Okay, wow, the numbers keep changing, so let me just see who has not spoken. There's someone listed as Donna who has not spoken before. I'm sending the panelist request, but not getting a response.
If not, let's, let's move on and we'll come back.
All right, so all, all the others, no, yes, all the others have spoken before. Mr. Halpern, Mr. Limer, Mr. Cronson, Ms. Mona's, Mr. Brin.
Why don't we do them? We'll do them in the order, we'll do them in the order in which they presented first.
Yeah, did Nancy Sherman speak before? I don't recall.
I, I don't think so.
Okay, so let's, let's bring her in first then.
Okay, good.
Ms. Sherman, please unmute. Okay, we should be able to hear you now.
Good evening. Good evening. As you know, I'm in favor of landmarking this building, but I find it's very important to let the commission know that in the 1980s, the Village of Thomaston recognized that there are historic buildings in Thomaston that are significant for a variety of reasons, and that it was a public necessity to protect, to protect and to preserve these buildings. And I'm telling you that as a commission because you are sitting on the Landmark Preservation Mission. That is your job, and that is your duty. As a member of that commission, when the experts tell you, and all of the experts tell you, including the $6,000 expert that the Village of Thomaston paid for. and all of the experts tell you, including the six thousand dollar expert that the village of Thomaston paid for, that this building falls clearly within the unambiguous language of the code of the village of Thomaston landmark statute. There is no question that this building falls within that definition and that it should be landmarked. The only decision that you have to make is whether this building should be landmarked or not. Now, Mr. Stern, I saw that you were reading off a list of items that you indicated that the commission was to consider economic circumstances, et cetera. I have scoured the code multiple times, both before this date and after you spoke.
Thirty seconds.
Is not in there. So that language that you told the commission that they have to consider economic factors, et cetera, et cetera, is not in there. And I want to tell the commission that it is your job just to consider whether this landmark, this building should be landmarked. And the, the experts have given you multiple reasons as to why that should be done. Your job is to approve or disapprove that designation. Once you do that, then it goes over to the Board of Trustees and they have that, the decision. I would like to speak again, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to people who haven't spoken and give them each their two minutes. Tom, who else is there?
Um, Wendy Halpern in and April are the only ones who have not spoken, so.
Okay, okay.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm assuming you could hear me and see me, is that right?
We can.
So, so a couple of things. I'm, I know I have two minutes and I reserve my right to have my second opportunity after the other people, and I'm just gonna make my points. First, uh, the two experts that were retained, um, Simeon and Anne were retained by sixty to seventy uh residents who all contributed to those consultants. Um, yeah, I'm just going down my list. I, during this hearing, um, it seems that some of the cameras of the committee members have been on and off, and I just hope that all five of you are here listening. Um, I want to also indicate Mr. Limer. Um, it's not clear to us who he represents because in all of the communications to the village, it seemed that he represented the developer, not the owner, and that the developer was trying to purchase the property subject to these plans. So I'd like Mr. Limer to clarify exactly who he represents. Um, I also like to address the pamphlet that Mr. Limer said omitted, the Tower Ford building. And actually, one of your commission members is the author of that pamphlet, um, Leila Mattson. And when we specifically asked Ms. Mattson, why was that building not included? Ms. Mattson indicated at the time she didn't even realize that Tower Ford was within Belgrade, but I encourage you to ask your own commission member why that building was not indicated. Um, I also want to clarify that the landmarking law protects the exterior walls, so to the extent that any project calls for converting to apartments or whatever it is, they're funding in that, right? And you saw Andrew Cronson's presentation on reuse. Financial hardship can be brought up at any time, even after landmarking. Um, the uh, the mayor has himself said that Tower Ford was one of the best taxpayers in the entire village, quote unquote. And it is a thriving car dealership. I live right around the corner from it, and there's no indication that it's financial hardship. Um, on a personal matter, I've been living in the village of Thomaston for over twenty years. I live at thirty-seven.
Wendy, I'm gonna have to ask you to continue.
Thirty more seconds.
No, I'm afraid we're gonna treat everybody to a second. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Who's next?
Unbelievable.
Just to be fair to everybody, who's next?
Who has not spoken is April.
Can you hear me?
We can. How are you?
Hi, Commissioner. Hi, good evening and happy new year to everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I will be brief. And I was trained as a cultural anthropologist uh in this country. I came to this country from China uh many years ago, uh, more than two decades ago. Uh, many immigrants like myself, I believe, came to this country for, you know, a better environment, uh, uh, a better culturally preserved um society. And uh I have worked with the UNESCO for a certain um number of years and working on world uh heritage reservation preservation projects. And one thing I remember vividly from many public policymakers and governors, and they all always, you know, try to put economic development before the public interest. And some of them, you know, the constructions uh came in the name of the um development. But constructions bring destruction and as we all see it in many Asian countries. And so my point here is to support the landmarking of this um property and as my um fellow residents um have said before, um, we all strongly support um the land, this, this property should be landmarked, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom?
Okay, well, the number is growing. Um, we have, let's see, who's not spoken? I think um Jade Chagrin has not spoken.
Be helpful if people had other, you know, different points of view to bring out. I mean, everybody can say whatever they'd like, but it would be helpful to the commission to hear if there are any other thoughts that are different.
Uh, Mr. Chagrin should be coming in. There he is. Please unmute.
Yes, good evening and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm a resident of Great Neck and have been for over twenty-four years. And I've been blessed in my life that I've been able to travel, and I strongly support the preservation of one twenty-four Middle Neck Road. It is a historic building, as we have heard from everybody. However, what I've learned in all those travels that I have been blessed to do and to see all over the world is that in everywhere, in Europe especially, that buildings that for whatever reason no longer meet their original need aren't destroyed, especially as they age. They're repurposed. There's no reason that this building cannot be repurposed in equitable way that will make it, make sense for us now and for future generations. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, there's Donna, I don't think has spoken. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, we'll see, we'll see if we recognize her.
Uh, please unmute.
Hello?
Hi, Donna.
We can hear you.
Hey. I'm the former director of the Roslyn Limax Society, a preservationist and a house historian. Um, I don't represent anyone except I believe very firmly in the preservation of our architecture on Moon Island in Nassau County. And I would like to mention the power of incremental change in our communities. This property is an excellent example of a two-term revival building which should be preserved not only for the architecture, but also the role this building played in the village since nineteen thirty-one. Once precedent is set and the historical built environment of a community is compromised and destroyed, this dynamic will be in full play and it will be difficult to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Okay, let's see, we have um, Marnie Leifer has not spoken.
Uh, stop for a minute. Does any member of the commission need a bio break or we good? Raise your hand if you'd like, like a, a short break for any reason.
Ms. Leifer, please unmute.
Guess not, let's keep going.
Hello, um, my name is Marnie Leifer. I've been a resident for nearly my entire life for forty-two years. Um, I think something that was said was so beautiful was that the um, this building is exactly, it's like a bookend. It is very special and incredibly recognizable. And I think it's time that Great Neck realizes how special it is and it preserves it for the future because it is special and the commission has the ability to save it for the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hold on one second, please. Let me just uh get this organized here. Okay, now we have people, everyone who's on the list has spoken before, so.
I think Aaron, why don't we start with Aaron? I remember Aaron particularly.
Yes, he's on the list.
Oh, oh, and then after Aaron, we'll do uh Mr. Limer. Aaron, let's, let's limit this uh to two more minutes, okay?
Thank you for letting me speak again. Uh, just for the record, uh, and I don't think I made it clear the last time I spoke, but I am strongly, my family is strongly in favor of landmarking uh this building. I live right down the street from the building. And uh, I think that just to echo what everyone else has said as far as the import of architecturally, historically of this building. Um, just to also, um, I, I think uh one of the other uh members of the public raised it a, a concern as far as um, Mr. Stern, what you had referenced as far as uh or instructions to the landmark commission as far as factors to consider. And um, I'm not sure where that, the source of that uh of what you were reading was from. It's not from the statute. The statute, and I read it, to be very clear and unambiguous. Um, and it uses very strong language as far as necessity, uh, and it goes to the powers of the landmark commission with regard to buildings like this, which we have a very well-credentialed list of uh, of, of consultants and experts. Uh, Ms. Walker, Mr. Bankoff, uh, the New York State Historic Preservation has commented. Uh, uh, A H R S, your own consultant, uh, Ms. Georgopoulos, uh, Mr. Cronson. Um, there, there's, there's uniformity. Uh, it is okay as far as the opinion. Uh, and just one more thing, uh, Mr. Limer, I know he's gonna be speaking again, but he raised something about that the landmarking has never been requested before with regard to this property. Frankly, uh, I don't know if that's true or not, but regardless, this is the first time that the building uh, the owner, property, whatever it is, ever attempted to destroy with a project. Steamroll basically, a project through to destroy the, the building itself. And that has sparked what you're hearing now. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak uh again.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, why don't we go to Mr. Limer? Then we'll do the others who, who have already spoken.
Please unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay, thank you. Just, just a couple of things. Uh, Mr. Cronson indicated in his chart that values of landmark properties go up. He then referred specifically to values of homes. This is not a home, this is a commercial establishment. This property has been built about ninety years. Nobody has ever sought to landmark it, landmark it before. My client bought it in good faith in order to make it a use that's permitted in the zone and now seeks all of a hundred and twenty days to put in a proper defense to items being raised for the first time tonight. How could it possibly have been prepared to respond to, to, to questions and comments that are first being presented tonight? We do not believe that a hundred and twenty days is a difficult issue for the board to consider when no prejudice can happen to the village, the residents or the building. Financial hardship is definitely a legitimate concern of this commission under section one twenty dash A C. When it talks about even when an application is pending, financial hardship can be taken into consideration for tearing it down. So if it can be taken into consideration for taking it down, it surely can be taken into consideration for whether or not it's going to be landmarked. The issue that the commission in, when the uh, the nineteen uh seventy-six uh dedication was published that the allegation that the commission didn't know that the Belgrade, that the Tower Ford building was within Thomaston. If you look at the walking tour, it's clearly there. And four of the destinations on the walking tour are on the other side of the Tower Ford building. So clearly, the commission was aware of the Tower Ford commission at the time.
The time is, the time is up, but you're the only one that's spoken on the owner's behalf tonight, and we've had a couple hours testimony on the other side. If you would like another sixty seconds to wrap up, I'll give it to you.
No, I, I'm just pleading in fairness to my client who's got a significant economic investment in this on a building he purchased in good faith to make a multifamily residence, to give him a hundred and twenty days in order to, to present to you why this shouldn't be landmarked, whether it be because it's not fitting to be a landmark or because of the significant economic impact it will have.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Who else is on the list, Tom, of people who have already spoken? Everybody can speak at, at one more time, twice.
We actually have uh two people who have not spoken.
Oh, good, let's go to them first.
George Abrahams.
Uh, I would like to point out that I agree with everything that the uh experts have presented to the meeting, except of course what Mr. Limer has said. Mr. Limer has, has, has given us words. His client with a significant economic interest had the opportunity to prepare for this meeting to put forward the case that the building should not be landmarked. They chose not to do that. And the residents who have put forward overwhelming arguments pro landmarks should be heard, and that is the only evidence that's before the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? That hasn't spoken yet.
Uh, there's one more, um, Louise. And we have another one after that now. Louise, if you'd please unmute. Are you still muted?
Okay, there we go.
There we go, okay.
I grew up in Great Neck. I have lived here for most of my adult life. I'm almost seventy years old. And this proposed project, I think, is such a horrible idea for the village of Thomaston. And I think that it should be stopped. We need to preserve whatever historic information we have in this town for future generations to be able to recognize where they came from.
Thank you, Louise. Okay, next, Tom.
Okay, um, let's see, we have two more now. Um, Anish Jay.
Uh, hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, my name is Anish Jan. Uh, I've been in this community since, well, living since two thousand and eight. Uh, been working since nineteen ninety, uh, ninety-eight, so I'm well aware of uh being in this community and its hi- history um, and its architecture. Um, uh, and Mr. Stern, I just want to say with all due respect on your comment on hearing a different point of view, if anyone has a different point of view. Um, there really isn't another different point of view other than an overwhelming majority of people, of members of this community that want that building landmarked. Um, you know, Mr. Cronson delivered an, another incredible presentation. Um, and at the same time, it was beautiful to see many of those pictures and, and learn about the history. Uh, but at the same time, it was heartbreaking to see so many stories of buildings being destroyed due to greed um and lack of participation of the community and uh local boards. And uh, I implore And I implore that you, the commit, you, the committee, the commission, to not have, quote, you know, blood on your hands, if you will, on being responsible for allowing another building to be destroyed in our community. And then secondly, I am not in favor of giving, giving Mr. Limer, his client, another 120 days. And secondly, there is a way to repurpose this where it's economically viable for the owner, as well as satisfying our community. And that's the direction that we should go. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, how, how does the stat, how many people have not spoken?
We've got, I'm trying to see, we have H. H. Guevaris, Erwin Levy have not spoken, and then all the others have spoken before.
Let's take the points that have not spoken. I encourage people to be brief, but everybody's entitled to their two minutes. But if you can say what you have to say unless, we'd appreciate it. The hour's getting late, but, but use the time you need.
All right, if you please unmute.
Hi, good afternoon. I should say good evening. Could you hear me?
We can.
My name is Helen Guevaris, and I've been listening to the presentations today. I, I think it's, you know, indisputable that the experts are, you know, uniformly in agreement that this should be, that the property at issue should be landmarked. But I just wanted to touch on the comments by Mr. Limer. It, it's interesting that he came in here to ask for a very substantial adjournment, but, and he has had two opportunities to address the community, but he hasn't offered a single reason why it is that this commission should extend such a, an extension to his client. He, he said that he wanted an opportunity to, to establish why the property should not be landmarked, and two, what the economic consequences of landmarking would be to his client. But I submit that those are issues that were known to his client, you know, several months ago, and there is no reason, at least that he has offered, why he hasn't been able to make that submission prior to today's hearing. And for that reason, I respectfully submit that the commission denied that request outright. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Let's see, we have one other, Erwin Levy. Mr. Levy, you have to accept your invitation to be a panelist? Here we go. And please unmute.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to echo what everyone else here has said, a yes to the historic significance and the landmark. I remind all of my other Great Neck residents, remember Kensington Johnson School, another gem that we no longer have. I'm not going to belabor everything. I agree with all of the excellent presentation, Mr. Cronson's in particular, and the historic preservationists. One thing I want to bring up that I don't think has as yet, the demolition of a building like this can also introduce pollutants into the environment. The wind carries this loose dust and debris. It settles everywhere. This is a building that was built like a tank. And as has already been described, and all of the construction debris alone is very detrimental to, to the community amongst everything else. And yes, it can be repurposed. There's beautiful buildings, converted schools that have been repurposed. This building would be a gem as a, as a converted building, adaptive reuse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet?
Just checking. I'm not sure, did Nina Gordon speak before?
I don't think so.
All right, let's try that, and then all the other.
Miss Gordon, Miss Gordon did speak earlier. I think she was second.
Okay, everyone's a second then. I just brought Miss Gordon in, but everybody on the list is a second speaker.
All right, I'll be, I'll be very brief. I just, it's Nina Gordon again. I'm going to be very brief. I just wanted to say that I, I fully support what everyone is suggesting about reusing and redesigning the existing building. And just in response to what Mr. Limer said about the fact that this wasn't designated as a important building in 1976, if you think about it, in 1976, the building was only 40 years old. That's a long time ago. That's almost 50 years ago. So as it has aged, it has become more important. And again, I fully support the landmarking, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom, I think what we'll do is we'll freeze the list now. People who want to speak a second time, we'll give each of them their two minutes, and then we're going to call it into the public session.
Okay, that's fine. So I have Wendy Halpern. Miss Halpern, okay, there we go.
Hi, um, so just a couple of points. So first, with regard to Mr. Limer's request for an extension, I requested that's denied. The, the landowner, or actually, Mr. Limer represents the developer, not the landowner. This property was first purchased, was last purchased in 2017. These issues have been on the agenda since August, and the landowner, like all of us, received written notice of this, that these proceedings were happening when we all did. The village was able to retain experts. We were able to retain experts to meet the strict deadline that the commission set forth. We had asked repeatedly for extensions of matters of days that were rejected because we were told that the matter had to be expeditiously decided. And I submit that that should, that the Mr. Limer's client should have adhered to that deadline as well. In 1976, there was no landmarking law. Okay, so there was no application to submit a landmark. And if, and the reason that no one ever did it all these years is because no one ever thought it was going to be torn down. Okay, so if it's, if it's necessary, we will now submit landmark applications for every building in Great Neck that, in Thomaston that needs to be landmarked. Mr. Limer said his client wants to listen to the people. Well, you hear what the people want. The people love this building. And your client, or whoever your client is, who wants to tear it down, it will be vigorously opposed. And this Landworking Commission has been given tons and tons and tons and tons of evidence showing why this building should be designated. And there's no basis whatsoever in the record why that, that position should be, why landmarking should not be designated. And it would be an arbitrary and capricious against all public policy. Okay, and you know what? There's, there's been fighting and fighting in this village, and it's not going to end. The village and the community in Great Neck feels very strongly about this building, and we will fight. I live around the corner from it, and you know what? I like it. And so does everyone else here. And it will never be torn down. And if we want to have decades of litigation over this, we're prepared to do that. And Mr. Limer, you can tell your clients what the people want.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list.
Mr. Cronson is going to be next.
How many are on the list, Tom? Just so I can.
There's three more after Mr. Cronson.
Okay, that'll, that'll be it.
Before my time starts, if I may, I'd like to just note that my first comments were made as a presenter, as pre-planned, and not as a person commenting from the public. So this is now my first comment. And also, as a point of order, as you had asked for people before to state their affiliation, I was retained by nobody volunteering, spending months on this out of extraordinary concern with no pay expected in return.
Thank you.
If you may stop your time now, please.
Okay, yep.
With regard to Mr. Limer, a 2005 meta-analysis of literature by the Brookings Institute noted that local landmark designation, and especially historic district, not just historic districts, tend to stabilize or increase property values. I misspoke. Landmarking is constitutional, warranted, and ample legal precedent to back it up, up to the Supreme Court. Applicants are only entitled to a reasonable rate of return when environmental review is factored in, and economic return is not even factored into landmarking. An environmental review through SEACR will be required regardless of whether this is landmarked. Public notice was given for months, and he and I and anyone else had ample time to weigh in and comment, and they did not take advantage of that. So that really is something. I'll also say that when you look at Great Neck Plaza next door and Roslyn, they look that way, and they're as desirable a place to live for a reason. It's nothing sensational. There's a lot of talk about making America a conversely Great Neck great again, the blighted storefronts, the blighted buildings, the economic conditions. What if this greatness that we're looking for is already here for us? My question to all of you is very simple. Why should Thomaston not be just as great, a beacon of beautiful streets that exude pride for residents and visitors alike? Why should we not also be a model for good governance and preservation, unlike what we have currently?
30 seconds.
Is the political will and unrelenting spirit of its residents. This is your chance to listen to the public, act in the public interest, and literally make new history for the future. As someone who is 25 years old, I have plenty of energy and plenty of time, and that's why I'm involved in this. And please note that if this does not work out, we will be going full on to landmark everything else that we can, and you have a full docket to know that everything in Great Neck will be protected if we do not have the understanding that even this can be protected with all the support that it has.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks, Andrew. Okay, who's next, Tom?
Ms. Morris is next.
Hi, I just have three things to say. First of all, this building had been financially responsible for 90 years. I don't think it's going to go under tomorrow. That's number one. And number two, it has been a, a building that has had business in it for 90 years. I don't know why everybody thinks talking about doing something else with it. It hasn't a thriving business in it right now. And the third thing is, with all the information and money that everybody has spent to get this expert opinions about the landmarking, it seems to me that the commission should just go ahead and landmark it, because there's nobody else out there to get more opinions from. Thank you. Please landmark it.
Thank you. Tom?
Okay, Ms. Sherman. Ms. Sherman, you need to unmute, please.
Yes, if I could, I would like to speak after Mr. Limer.
He already spoke.
Limer already spoke.
I thought he wanted to speak again.
No, we're not, we're, we're, he's finished.
Oh, he is. Okay. All right. Well, first of all, I want to discuss what Mr. Limer said. Mr. Limer has known for months, for months, that this, that this building, that there was applications to landmark this building. We don't even know who Mr. Limer represents. We have email correspondence from Mr. Limer that indicates he represents the developer. The developer is Hornet Capital Partners. So who does he represent? Hornet Capital Partners? Or does he represent the owner, which is 124 Middle Neck Realty? Nobody knows. Okay, that's number one. So it's disingenuous for him to come in here at the 11th hour in the middle of a hearing and request an adjournment, when I said, when I have specifically requested of the commission on more than two occasions, that we be given an adjournment of time, because we were only given 30 days to prepare and to have experts come and prepare and to do research and to present their opinions. 30 days we were given. And we had requested a few weeks in order to give those experts more time, because they had pre-planned vacations over the Christmas holiday. So instead, they had to work over the Christmas holiday. Where was Mr. Limer, sleeping? Really? I mean, this is outrageous. He's represented this developer for two years. He clearly knew we were, we were requesting landmarking of this building. And frankly, that is not this commission's job. This commission's job is to decide whether this building should be landmarked under the code. And I request that this commission do their job, do their job of landmarking this building to preserve the gateway to Great Neck, to preserve this piece of architecture, which is close to 100 years old. And that's what I request that the commission do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Mr. Bryn is, we have one other now after Mr. Bryn, but you cut the list off. Mr. Bryn is the last one. Mr. Bryn, please unmute.
Thanks for allowing me to make additional comments. Last month, I was on the call with the, with the mayor, and I was very pointed about the lack of transparency surrounding this whole issue. We didn't know who the owner was. We didn't know who the developer was. We didn't really have any information whatsoever that pertained to basically the quality of life in, in the community and the people who live in the community. So here we are again, and it's not really a happy new year. We're still very much in the dark. And it just seems to me that the governance continues to worsen. It's not transparent. It's poor governance. If after tonight, this building is not landmarked, and an extension of time, or more time is given to, to these shadow figures to do another end run, which really they did the first time. They wanted to hurry up and knock that thing down and put up a glass box. And the community went ape, and rightfully so. And that's when the landmark issue really came to the fore. It didn't need to be discussed. It was, it was just, we knew it quacked like a duck. It always quacked like a duck. Just stand there and look at it. You know what it is. But if dollars are driving this, and there's going to be some secret deals and churning of money and millions and people retiring on this deal, I mean, really, everybody's got to get that out of their heads. This is about the quality of life. Now, you're going to tell me I got 10 seconds, right? Do the right thing. Landmark it because it's a landmark, and tell the developers and, and the owners that you're going to issue an RFP. Once it's landmarked, you issue a request for proposals.
Okay.
And wait, no, no, don't cut me off. You cut people off.
Give me a few seconds.
When you cut people.
Okay, let's go on. You know what? There was one other person, Tom. Let's stop this for a minute. I will come back to you.
It really destroys credibility, doesn't it?
I will come back to you, sir. But there was somebody else that we added to the list, and I want to make sure speaks, and I will come back to you. I want to give everybody the same chance to talk.
I have to go retrieve that, because I took it out, but I think it was someone who had already spoken before.
That's okay.
And here it is. Hold on one second.
And then we'll, then we're going to come back to the last speaker, and that'll be the end.
Hello there. This is Alka Jane.
Yep. Hi, Alka.
I am speaking again because of Mr. Limer and his comments tonight. He says that his, the owner he represents bought the building in good faith. It is a thriving building currently. So good faith would only mean that he, the plan in 2017 was to buy it to tear it down. And so therefore, it is not good faith. It, it is entirely bought for greed. And greed over preservation is at play here. And what the owner doesn't realize is that there is residents that this committee needs to listen to. And nobody has even brought up the fact that those 200 signatures that were signed between Christmas and New Year over the holiday period, over something where normally even your mayor was only voted in with 27 votes, shows the level of community involvement. Nobody here has even spoken about the fact that 65 different residents raised almost $40,000 to fight this over one month and over a weekend in August, because Mr. Limer and his client decided to red carpet their proposal in the dead of the night using an incentive law that allows them to ride over all the residents' rules and this village's rules and regulations to build what the hell they want, when every other resident follows rules. So I would like this committee to understand that this, this community this community is extremely angry already with the behavior of Mr. Limer and his client. And they shouldn't be given any priority and should be treated equally like all residents have to and follow the rules. And Mr. Levin should stop negotiating with Mr. Limer.
Thank you. Now, come back to the last gentleman who had a parting word for us. And then we'll close the public session.
Yes, let me get back to Mr. Bryn.
Well, you know, I can only, I can only say that there's an expression, this is a shanda. It is a serious shame. You're supposed to be the steward. You're in charge. If you don't declare this a landmark tonight before this meeting ends and close the door to these folks who want to come in and just knock it down and put up a glass monstrosity, if you don't establish that tonight or get it in the public record somehow, this is a heck of a legacy, and you're going to wear it like a very bad hat. And I'm sure that's not what you want to do. And, you know, it was wonderful that you replaced the mayor in moderating this meeting. But it doesn't change a thing. It doesn't reduce the ire that you're experiencing. And feel free to cut me off, but what you're doing, what you're about to do is put money over the priceless piece of property that you accidentally inherited in your village, which is the tower building. And you got to make a choice. You got to make a choice. And it's not, it's not easy. But do the right thing. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. You don't want me to try? Okay. What we're going to do is this, we're going to close, we're now going to close the public session. I, unless there's a motion from a committee member, which I will not make, we are not going to adjourn the public session. We're going to close it. That gives us 60 days to issue our report, which we will do in a public session where it will be discussed. I don't have a date for that yet. And I'll have to produce some kind of draft report or have some internal discussion first. But what we'll do is we'll pick a date among the commission and the attorney and anybody else involved. We'll publicly notify everyone the way we've done for appropriately for other meetings. And we'll have a public meeting to discuss the report, which we're duty bound to write and to send to the Ward of Trustees with our decision. So unless there's a commission member who wants to move to adjourn the proceedings, in which case we would vote on that, I do not so move. Let me, anybody, any commissioner want to make such a motion? Hearing none, there'll be no adjournment, and we will inform the public through all appropriate means of our next and what I anticipate to be our final meeting, at which we need to adopt a report with our conclusions. We'll take the matter under consideration between now and then. I want to thank everybody from the public.
You're going to need, you're going to need a motion to close the meeting.
I forgot that last time, but I'll see if I can remember this time. But I just wanted to thank everybody that participated. I know there are a lot of high, strong emotions here. I have no involvement in the zoning process, and I know that it generated a lot of public ill will. I'm sorry to hear that. I live in this community. I'm a member of the community. I don't like hearing that in any respect. But this committee will be independent, as I've said before. We'll take into account everything the public has said, and to the best of our ability, we will exercise our discretion in accordance with the law. So with that, I wish everybody a good night, and is there a motion to adjourn? Was everyone too tired? I'll move it. Is there a second? Raise your hand, Lila, if you want to second the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Nolan raised his hand.
Lila, does that mean you're against adjournment? I don't.
I second. I second.
All in favor of adjourn? Aye. Anybody oppose? I think we're adjourned. Thanks to everybody who organized the meeting and participated.
For the record, we did not hear from Ms. Chatton over on the vote.
Miriam, do you want to just unmute us and vote? I'm not sure she hears us. I guess not. So we're, the motion is carried in any event, given that we have four votes. And we will, we will now do what I said. So thanks, everybody. Good night, and we'll speak again in public session.